Let's take all over Ockridge over this is the side of C. And they may, I don't know. Where is it?
I thought the state law you were referring to was just an advance to business tax, not advances on.
But this one, I, 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 well, maybe, uh, I'd like to see it on the agenda next week. We're in the workshop for the fellow teams to be doing and start processes. And I know we've got some more regulations we're looking at. I wouldn't suggest that, but if we look forward to getting that done, so we can, uh, at least start making some money off of it or start making them pay up for it.
I'll offer a suggestion. It might be well coordinated with the county and other cities as well, because if you impose an ordinance, uh, or impose a taxing mechanism the way Knoxville does on vendor trucks, if you don't have the same throughout the county, they'll just move down the road a half mile. And, uh, it basically will be ineffective. Ideally, we should have a vendor truck fee throughout Rome County and in the cities as well, so that everybody's on the same point.
And I discussed that at our last meeting with, uh, the county as well as the city of Ockridge, and they were both on board with trying to move forward with ordinance that would be uniform throughout the area. There was a last minute occurrence that prohibited Kingston from having a representative there. I think we discussed it before Rockwood Representative arrived, but there is some desire among the, much of the county to have the uniform ordinance so that they couldn't just move to another location and continue doing what we're doing.
Is there not a business license already in place? They technically apply for and get before they do that?
No, under state law, uh, they have the right, under state law, to have mobile trucks that leave a permanent location, which they have in Knoxville and the North City. Uh, they can travel to other locations with that truck and pay their taxes through Knox County. I had about a three months' interaction with Department of Revenue and including our attorneys, and basically, they can do that, and they do not have to have a business license with us. They do not have to collect our local option sales tax. And, um, of course, I made a case that that was a local tax that should be collected by anyone who sells inside the city or in the county as well. But Department of Revenue says, no, whatever tax they collect goes through Knoxville. And so any local option tax that comes back, comes back to Knoxville.
You people like Fuller Brush, Neutral Light, all those other salespersons, they don't have it as much as they used to, but they used to have to apply their licenses and pay the city.
Yeah, their license in Knoxville covers it for transit trucks that go out to other locations to come back. That's, that's, I've talked again, Yager, about addressing that. I think there's some legislation should be addressed. But the other option is, what our city manager is pursuing is to get in place something like Knoxville has, which is a taxing mechanism for, uh, the vendors that sell through vendor trucks.
Let's make this an agenda item for the workshop, if that's okay, and maybe have some options of some example ordinances we can look at. Councilman Best, you're in here.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Abrams?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Minnet?
On that same note, I did discuss their situation with them when they first started locating at Lowe's. And their statement to me at that time was, when they found the right piece of property, they would build here. So I'm wondering if that was their intent all along, or if, uh, they didn't have any intention of locating property in the first place. Yeah, I agree that there's something we need to do about that. But we also need to address the, uh, fruit stands and fruit markets and vegetable markets that are, that are setting up, um, in the city. The, they're a little misleading. They're, they're making people think that they are selling locally grown produce when they're, that's not the case. If you drive by and look at their stuff, it's all graded, it's all been, uh, uh, put out by a big operation. You don't get that type of quality with lovely grown fruit. You get better flavor, but you don't get the, you don't get the spotless tomatoes and things that have been inspected and graded for that purpose. The, and speaking of those produce stands, uh, we probably need to put the farmer's market on your agenda, too.
Workshop agenda?
Yes, sir. And I'd like to, uh, comment about the number of people who are here today. This is, this is what your American government is all about, your participation. And you're to be congratulated for taking an interest in local government and showing up to the meetings.
Anything else, Councilman Minnet?
That's all.
Councilman Wright?
I have a couple of things. I have been opening this car to them since the road opened. I don't know when that happened, was kind of shocked coming up through their jockey to get on the right lane and look. I thought, man, they need to open it or a big truck just came through. But that's really something, uh, something that people have been looking forward to. And secondly, uh, everybody, I guess, knows our Blue Devils are in the playoffs. We're mighty proud of that high school and those children and their families. Third thing is, uh, in a workshop, it doesn't have to be the next one, I'd like for us to take a look at how and why we release personal information on employees. I know and I understand a lot about the freedom of information and all that sort of stuff, but, uh, in a recent article, I guess, if I was an employee from here on in, I wouldn't say nothing if you were hanging out to dry.
I also have alternative revenue sources to put on one of the workshops as well, I think that you want to put on there, Lonnie. I have one old business item, and it's more just to make you aware and something to think about. We, a couple of years ago, went out on a limb and tried to, to do something to make Rome County a better place, and that was, we passed a Sudafedrin restriction ordinance that, that banned all sale of Sudafedrin products in, in stores in the city limits of Harriman, with the hopes that Kingston and Rockwood would come on board and, and do the same thing to stop home meth labs. As you know, we were the only ones that did that, and so what it did was it forced people that were buying Sudafedrin products to make methamphetamines, it forced them into the other cities around us to buy their ingredients. However, there's been a, you know, we haven't, there wasn't much backlash. As a matter of fact, the stores actually liked it. But we are in a time where meth, home meth labs are on, on the downturn, and unfortunately, there's other drugs that are taking place. But I'm not so sure that we still need to have this enforcement in place and inconveniencing the residents at this point, especially since Rockwood and Kingston don't want to pass it. So in the next couple of weeks, if you don't mind, think about it, ask some people about that. I've talked to the sheriff and I've talked to the chief. There's pros and cons, and so that may, we may want to look at lifting that ordinance restriction. Old business, going to department reports. Chief Hallow?
Yeah, just two things to give you update. Halloween night, by the way, we have these things on the location we're working. The other thing is today we finalized, we have other radios encrypted now, so we're all good to go on that. And I think Rockwood's gonna be tomorrow, and Kingston's gonna be next day, by another week or so. So it may be on the same, same page on that.
You have to take each radio encrypted?
Yes.
Okay. Department reports, anybody else? Fire department?
Uh, no, just, well, I don't think we got it in the haunted hospital, done really good. Done, we made far more than what we had ever planned on making. Just thanks everybody for that, come out and help us.
Okay. Bill Young, Utility Board report?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. We are, as of today, finalizing the water line replacement program. Paving work is done, there's a little bit more finishing work that has to be done as far as paving goes. And I think they were down there this afternoon on Morgan Street, but, uh, and there's a manhole we've got to do a little bit of work on along the Boney, but other than that, it's done. Driving up and down the Boney Street seems to be in pretty good shape to me, so we're glad, glad to have that. And they're, they're finishing some cleanup over on Club Springs as well. Rear Ten Road, the Sur Force Main that was going along Bum Gardner, it's been installed and tied in. Of course, there was a road board had to be done across from the elementary school, and that's been taken care of. Then they've been testing that line, that works ongoing. Gas line, I think they were making a tie-in today, which they'll have to be pulling air tests and so forth on that, but that works moving, moving on down the line. There continues to be, uh, some struggle with the sewer crossing, uh, down by where Gucci's old market was. Their original plan was to bore it. There's so much rock in there, plus apparently they hit some rebar, and I don't know where that came from, but I think he broke his boring head on, on the rebar, so then they tried to go back to Plan B, which is do a road cut, and that's, that's been a struggle. But anyway, they'll get it done, but it's certainly taking a lot longer, well than anticipated. I want to thank the city for allowing us to apply for the CDBG grant for our water system. We were awarded that grant, we've been notified. And, uh, Mayor, before you leave, if you could, affix your signature to a few papers there, I certainly appreciate it. Get that process moving forward with contract. We were awarded $525,000. Of course, we have a matching part of that that we'll be putting in. But that's, uh, we're gonna be replacing about a mile of water line that's out on Airport Road that has been a major source of continuous repairs and problems, so it's really gonna help our water system and that part of our system. The electric system, we replaced a line that, an old copper line that went between Walgreens down toward Old South Supply, that's been done. We also took down a line that was across the interstate with the help of the, uh, the state and so forth. We had a road, roadblock, dropped that line out of the way, it's not being used anymore. Got that cleaned up. All of the material's been ordered for street light upgrades. In fact, some of that's already started coming in, so hopefully we'll be coordinating with city manager and be planning when to get that work done here in not too distant future. And also, happy to say that we had a complete gas inspection recently by the TRA Tennessee Rectory Authority. They found no violations in our system. We're mighty proud of that, appreciate all the hard work our employees do. But to keep our citizens safe and our community safe, and that's, that's an important thing. And just one side note, if I could, Mr. Wright, I completely concur with your statement. One of the, one of the issues that's always stirred me is, uh, having to deal with personnel issues that get put all over the front of the news. I, I understand open records law, certainly concur with it. Our customers have a right to know what's going on at utility, but there's some matters that need to be addressed and have to be addressed, I guess, in the legislature. But it's always bothered me that you can't really deal with those issues without, you know, having to spray that all over the front of the news. So that's my two cents worth on that, if you didn't ask for it, but you got it anyway. Any questions, anybody have?
Boney Street looks good.
Thank you.
Kevin, City Manager report?
A few dates to make you aware of. On Monday, November the ninth, the Public Works Department will be beginning its leaf pickup. The full schedule is available, um, on our television station, it's been in the newspaper, and we'll get the information here at the office if anybody wants to know, but they'll be starting on November the ninth in the downtown area, and moving on out from there. Alice and I have a meeting scheduled with Cindy McPherson, also on Monday, I believe, to, to gather some information related to back tax parcels and sales, which is something that the Farmers Market Committee had requested in order to put together a, a recommendation to the council as to how to pursue the county options for the EK property across the street. So you should be seeing something coming out of that committee here in the near future. On, uh, on the eleventh, I have a meeting scheduled with the personnel person from MTAAS so that we can try and finalize updates to personnel policies to bring to you all for review and possibly approval, try and get the personnel policy updated so that it reflects the, um, the new charter language that we're currently operating under. Also, on the twelfth is, Lorne Devad with MTAAS will be coming down to meet with the Recreation Department to begin the study that we mentioned last month, so that around the first of the year, he'll be able to submit to us a report for further consideration regarding the Recreation Department's facilities and programs and so forth. If anyone is interested, we do now have a hard copy set of the plans for the Margaret Bridge project here in the office, so you're welcome to take a look at those. They are still undergoing revision, so there could be some changes before the project is actually put out to bid, but this will be pretty close, I would think, to the final version that will be bid. And also, a note with regard to that project, we had initially inquired T-Doc as to whether it would be possible for us to do some, um, some alternates on paving to try and match up the areas that they would be paving on that project, particularly with Queen Street in mind. And we, we did not have to pursue that, thankfully, with regard to the number of T-Doc regulations that you have to go through, because HUV took the full width paving of Queen Street up to the limits of the Margaret Bridge project. So on Queen Street, there will be no added paving that, that we would have to do in the future. As noted, we considered the haunted hospital to, to be a success, raised somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000 to go towards medical equipment for the rescue truck that we hope to, to be working out of in the next calendar year. Also, some of you may recall, some months back, there was a company that came in and did some filming at the hospital building. It was a company out in Knoxville, does a number of different TV shows. The episode, if you get home in time tonight, was set to air at nine o'clock on Discovery ID, I think is what the, what the TV station is, that was filmed partially here at the hospital. And I think there's at least two members of the Public Police Department that are also going to be in that episode, so you may see a, a couple of familiar faces as well. And then finally, just to let you know, with regard to personnel, in the fire department, Assistant Chief Daniels will be serving interim over the department until we move forward with a permanent, um, process for choosing someone to head up that department.
Any questions? No, we'll move on to committee reports. The agenda items, twelve and thirteen, if you don't mind, we'll move those, we'll move those up, that way the interested parties can leave after the discussion. So we'll move to item twelve first. Discuss and possibly approve ordinance 1115-01. First reading to amend zoning map for James E. Neely, 1674 Old Rome Street from C2 to R1. Copy of that ordinance in compliance with our charter, charter, charter requirements is in your packet. Is there, is there a motion for discussion purposes? Is there a motion to go ahead and approve first reading?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ayler, and second by Councilman Bass, Councilman Ayler. Councilman. Floor is open for question or discussion, and I'll yield the floor to, or ask someone to yield the floor to Maria.
I'll yield.
Maria, do you have anything you want to comment?
Not really. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer.
Does everyone understand where this is? Tell us.
I don't.
It's over on Old Rome Street, across from the Old Mill.
Across from what? Berlin's and Mill. The old Berlin.
On Old Rome, on Old Rome Street, Old Rome Street.
Across from the old Rome.
That's what it was down there.
Old Rome, huh?
Yes, sir. It's in between, it's in between Highway 27 and Old Rome Street, it's the strip of the area.
Please let the record show, Councilman Me is here. Councilman Me, we're on item twelve, but we bumped it up, we're actually on the first item, we just moved it up, uh, resolution, uh, R1115-01. No, 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 ordinance 1115-01, first reading.
Now, who actually, who actually put this item on the agenda?
Maria.
So you're in agreement with it?
Yes. And it went to the planning commission, they recommended it.
The, uh, current use is residential, so, um, while it would be grandfathered in, even though it's zoned otherwise, this basically just reflects the current use of the property.
Mr. Neely, do you have anything that you would like to add?
No, sir, not really. Maria told me that it had been zoned commercially since the fifties, and the, um, the guidelines in which were adopted later on, as far as those go, my property doesn't even, it doesn't, doesn't even fit the guidelines for commercial property. And I went in front of the board and they were very understanding and willing to, willing to help, so I do appreciate all the help you all give us. I'm trying to sell the house, and the guy that is trying to buy it is trying to seek unconventional ways to buy the house. And the guidelines have got a little more strict since the housing market has kind of fell off, and it's a little bit more difficult through unconventional means, but I do appreciate the consideration.
Floor's still open.
As I was, I'm looking at this, is this directly across the old Rome Road?
Yes, sir.
It includes all the properties except two, uh, down at the end of the block, and one of them is used commercially. East demolition used to be there, now there's, I think it's a pool.
Dennis Keeling owns it, it's, uh, East Tennessee Pool and Spa is, I guess, his warehouse building, is what he works out of.
When somebody said it was residential, now that's really, that's what had me a little confused, because I knew there had been some, at least, outdoor storage down there.
Um, yes, there's been a couple businesses right there, and that's at the very end, the far end of Old Rome Street. The rest of it is, is all residential.
Residential.
Yes, sir. Except for a property owned by, uh, uh, East Tennessee Natural Gas Company, which tax-wise, they don't pay taxes on that anymore, so it doesn't really matter to them what
Floor's still open for first reading. Being that there'll be, there'll be a second reading, I believe, on the seventeenth, is that right, or the third Tuesday? And we'll have public hearing. Just before our workshop, yeah. Any more discussion, questions? Call the roll, please.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Mike Bass?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Pass first reading, we'll see you on second reading then. Next item on the agenda is the, actually, item thirteen, discuss and possibly approve ordinance 1115-02. First reading to amend the zoning map for Me Jung Kang, 705 Trent Street from R1 to C1. That also is included in your packet. Is there a motion for discussion purposes to pass first reading?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Minnet, and second by Councilman Ayler. Councilman Minnet?
Is this what used to be the first Church of Christ gymnasium?
Right.
What is, this is my community, so that's the reason I'm interested. What is, what's the use of that?
That's, that's gonna be used as a, like a, uh, office for consulting.
Consulting office?
Yeah, some engineering consulting, I mean, that's the plan. And, you know, the nature of the property may not be suitable for residential use, right? So as a, you know, for long-term investment, also investment value, we thought maybe, you know, commercial, commercial C1.
Not gonna be, not gonna be a whole lot of traffic in and out of there, a lot of...
Right, no, no retail, nothing like that.
Okay.
Councilman Ayler? Yes, sir. Floor is open for question or discussion.
This is the old gymnasium, or life center, or whatever they have behind the church.
Have you all purchased it yet? Have, have you purchased it yet?
Uh, we are in the process of, and this approval is also under the conditions.
Okay. Assuming it passes first reading, is this also on the November seventeenth for second reading? Floor's still open.
And Maria, this went through the same process?
Right, it went to the planning commission, they made the recommendation.
Floor's still open, any more questions? Motion in the second to approve first reading of ordinance 1115-02, being no more further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Mike Bass?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
November seventeenth will be second reading. Motion passed. Uh, now we'll get back on to item nine, discussing possibly approved resolution R115-01, Administrative Services. This is a resolution also in your packet, it won't require two readings, only one reading. Is there a motion to pass this?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Minnet, second. Second by Councilman Polly, Councilman Minnet?
No, sir.
Councilman Polly? Floor is open for question or discussion.
Who, uh, who put this on the agenda?
Kevin.
And, and what?
This resolution essentially just, uh, formalizes, uh, in the form of a resolution, the approval that the council gave, uh, at one of the meetings last month, um, through partners, uh, to prepare the personal recreation grant, um, for the 2016 funding round.
Okay, so that, that, they're going to prepare the grant first?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
Floor is still open. Call the roll, please.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Mike Best?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item, discuss and possibly approve the fire department aid agreement. This is included in your packet. This is also something that's been, uh, discussed and discussed over the last six months or so, um, maybe longer. There has been a committee work group that was formed, uh, to look at this closer. For discussion purposes, there a motion to go ahead and approve this automatic aid agreement?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Minnet, second. Second by Councilman Holly. Councilman Minnet?
Before, when I first looked at this, I, I, I did not see an advantage to us because I thought we had, uh, personnel problems that we could not, uh, man our fire stations in a proper manner if we did this. But since, uh, reading this and reading the, uh, fire, uh, services, uh, report from T, uh, TML, uh, the way it's explained in there, uh, this will be a good thing for us.
Councilman Holly? Floor is open for question or discussion.
Who, who did we have from the city that was part of that group that worked this out?
I don't remember. Do you, Kevin?
The, uh, the committee that reviewed?
Yeah.
Um, it was, uh, myself, Councilman Minnet and the fire chief.
Okay.
Is this, is this cost effective?
Um, I, I do believe, uh, the, uh, the concept is, um, there were a couple of, uh, changes that MTA's had, um, suggested that we consider, um, prior to adoption. Uh, I, I would say that, um, uh, current fire department personnel have not had an opportunity to weigh in on this, but they, they have expressed, uh, support of the concept. They just haven't seen the specific language contained in this particular agreement. One suggestion is really more of a, um, a legal type wording and, and I'll sort of put this out there and sort of leave it up to Allison to decide how to, how to move forward, but essentially the MTA's attorney said that the, uh, the section on indemnification, uh, was not legally enforceable for a Tennessee municipality under state law and questioned whether or not it even needed to be contained within the document. They suggested deleting it, but said, uh, it really makes no difference, in their opinion, as to whether you let it in or not, uh, because again, it is not legally enforceable, so, um, it's as if it wasn't there to begin with and, and that's, uh, by virtue of language that's contained within, uh, state law. The second thing has to do more with, um, with, with how, uh, a, a call would be responded to, um, what, uh, Dennis Wolfe with MTA's, uh, said we might want to consider as a policy, which he termed first pipe arrest night, um, in responding to these mutual aid calls. And essentially what that does is, uh, it limits the amount of time that you spend on calls that are either false alarms or, uh, which really don't require any assistance. And, uh, and I'll try to summarize what he said, uh, and I've got an email that contains his exact wording, but basically what he said is whatever the closest, uh, responding location is, they respond to emergency traffic. Then they, then all the other depart, all the other locations that are going to respond start rolling out, but they don't go in emergency traffic. Once the, uh, first, uh, crew arrives on the scene, they make a determination as to whether, um, there is a true emergency or not. If there is, then at that point they'll radio everyone and all the units will, uh, begin to respond to emergency traffic if they've not already arrived. In the event that it's a false alarm, they would cancel it and the other units would return to their stations. Uh, and in doing so, you would probably limit the amount of time, uh, that the units spend outside of the city on a call in which they're not needed. We, we are ready to go when we're needed anyway. Um, and also you sort of balance your personnel issues on the need for having to call other people in to fill the vacancies. You're only calling those people in, um, when there's a true emergency and, uh, like I say, under our current agreement, we're not responding to calls anyway.
As I, as I understand that, that scenario, if there is a fire at, uh, 615, uh, Trenton Street, we would respond to that, emergency traffic. At the same time, dispatch would be dispatching also Rockwood and Kingston.
In this case, uh, this is just with Kingston, so they'd be dispatching Kingston.
Just Kingston. They would dispatch Kingston. If we got on the scene at 615, uh, Trenton Street and we determined that could be handled by the crew that was on the scene, they would then radio the, uh, other responding unit and tell them to back down and return to their station.
Let me ask you a question. What if, let's say 615 Trenton Street, that, we get a call, we go, they dispatched Kingston to come. Uh, let's, let's put the scenario of Kingston. We automatically start responding. And once we start responding, we've got automatically radio more men in to cover our station because we're just leaving two men covering town or harem. Well, you're automatically going to have to start paying overtime. That's, that's my biggest concern with it, is you're going to be paying overtime, you're going to be running, and it may not be a lot of calls, but, uh, the mutual aid agreement we have in place right now, you still have every service in the county coming.
I think the advantage, the advantage that they're talking about here is, is the time that elapses if, if a department gets on the scene and they determine that they definitely have an emergency and you haven't already started the other units in that direction, uh, you probably save enough time, uh, by getting that, that other unit rolling, uh, to, uh, maybe prevent loss of life.
The, the other, the other primary advantage is, uh, if you have this agreement in place, then, um, as soon as that call goes out, uh, according to, uh, Dennis Wolfe, all of those, uh, units that are, that are being dispatched are counted by ISO awards, um, equipment and manpower, um, that is needed on scene. So both cities would get credit, um, for the other cities' units. But if we go with the, um, with what he suggested, the first pipe arrest night, then the thought process is, um, if, if our assistance is not needed, then, um, our engine, uh, probably, um, has not left the city limits prior to, uh, confirmation of whether they're needed or not. Um, and as such, um, you wouldn't have to call in the backup personnel, um, if they haven't left the city limits yet.
But that's if we change the wording that's in there now.
Right.
What, what is the committee, what is the committee? What do you all want us to do? You all met with them, what's your, what's your recommendation?
Um, this, the committee has not met since this most recent information has been obtained from, um, MTA's. So they have not made a, their recommendation as they've heard yet.
So would it be more comfortable to have the committee come up with a wording and make a recommendation before we go on this? I hate to blow this and then change their wording down the road if it made, if it was a recommendation.
Where, where would that be applicable in this current? Would it be under, uh, procedure, uh, would be procedures? Because it would be, it would really be...
Added wording, right?
It, it, it probably would change the language in the procedure section.
Yeah.
Kevin, which, which, uh, fire department propels this? Where did this start?
I, um, I can't, I can't really say. I, I can say I got this particular agreement from Kingston. My understanding is there were conversations going on prior to, to, uh, me coming to harem, so I really can't say where it started.
Did we start? I think we were involved in the discussions when it started, yeah.
But, but the agreement was written by Kingston. And let me, one other question, we'll quit. Is there, is there an instance in the last year where if this had been in place, that the outcome of some event would have been different?
I don't know. Maybe, I don't know.
Well, the question I have is, uh, we also, we operate similar to two different departments here. So don't we already operate within harem as the first pot type thing? Because you would call out station two, station one had it, one station. At the time of a station goes up and down. But, uh, we don't respond, we don't send all our trucks to every fire we have. We wait until the first one gets. South Hareman doesn't leak to everyone.
Structure fires. It's, you know, structure fires. Yeah. That's the key that there's not, that this, this would only be applicable for structure fires.
And, and to give you an idea, as, as far as numbers and, and I've got the documentation, but roughly speaking, um, we have about twice as many structure fires as Kingston does.
Which would send them rolling a whole lot faster than her, a whole lot more than we would.
Have we looked at businesses though in each city that would have false alarms that would require a call out?
Uh, we're way busy. I know that reports of them, we do, I mean, answer way more all calls than they do. Uh, it, it would, I, in my opinion, it would definitely benefit us more than it would them.
I, I know, um, what, what Dennis said was, uh, um, the ISO credit would be afforded to the city, particularly if we can find a way to balance it to where we're not responding to emergency traffic to, to every call valid or not. Um, and, uh, and, and he, he felt like, um, due to the number of responses that people would be, particularly, uh, the number of fires that would be picked up beneficially in the harem.
I've got a question.
Uh, hang on, we need to yield the floor to you. Anybody, somebody yield the floor, please. Councilman Best, yield the floor. Yes, ma'am.
When Baseltown, the house caught fire recently and burnt the area back this side of town, uh, who all responded to that?
Uh, we had, uh, Hareman, Kingston was over there with...
So they were?
In Midtown, Hostay.
Because we really appreciated, if it had spread, you know, the, the whole area this way, uh, through the wooded area there, it could have been major, you know? And, uh, of course, we appreciated very much that they got there and responded as quick as they did and got it put out, so...
Very well contained.
You know, just that one incident is what sort of comes to my mind when you all were talking and that's the reason I wanted to ask, who responded then?
That's under our mutual aid agreement, just to let everybody know, if, if there, if, when the Miller and Brewer caught on fire, uh, the, the, the call came in, central dispatch called station one and said, you have a building that's on fire. They, they responded, when they got there, saw it was a structure fire, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, then they called and said, we need help, we need, uh, Hareman and Rockwood to come. So they're coming, probably five minutes, eight minutes later. This, if this agreement was in place, probably wouldn't have had a whole lot of difference. Uh, but when they called Hareman and said, you have a fire, come to your structure fire, they would have, at the same time, called Kingston and said, come on. And so it would have gotten them on the road quicker. That's, that's what this would do. Uh, just get them on the road quicker. If my house is burning, I want everybody coming as quick as they can. That's why I like it. I, it just gets them there quicker.
Grasp the flower for the house.
You all think it would be best to put, to let them adjust the wording and bring it back to do the rest now?
Yeah, clean it up.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I mean, I think it'd be, you know, to have the wording there. My, my biggest concern, and I'm, I'm for it, I'm not against it, I want to know, I'm just concerned, uh, you know, we've, we've got four, maybe five guys on ship and it just scares me to take two guys out of our town and leave not enough men to run a truck, uh, because that doesn't leave us enough to run one truck, uh, by law. So, you know, you're leaving your town, we've got to start calling people in. I just want to protect our guys as much as Kingston wants to protect ours. Uh, our job is to make sure that our guys are protected in Hareman. And that's my main concern. And that's why the committee, your, your recommendation is important to me because you all have met, discussed it, you know, the pros, the cons, and that's, that's what I want to see is, is what is best for the people at Hareman. Along with people at Kingston, but it's for Kingston to, to take care of them. Uh, but my, I will make sure that we're in good shape and we can do it. And another thing that we need to consider, this, this is an agreement with Kingston. What do we do when Rockwood comes and says, I want the same agreement? You know, what, what do we do when the other ones start coming? You've done it for one, you're going to start doing it for the rest of them. And I just want to make sure we've got the manpower and the ability to do that before we jump out to a start. It's not that I'm against it. I, I was there. I want all the help I can get, like everybody does, but I want to make sure we've got the help we give.
Those are some of the same concerns I had when we first were discussing this.
There is some language in here, um, that does give, um, the chief of either city the ability, um, not to respond, uh, if there is some continuing circumstances. If we've got equipment that's not operable and, and we can't let that equipment leave the city, or if, or if we're already out on the call and we don't have the manpower available, that, that time to do so. And both cities have the opportunity not to respond, um, I, it, it's all in the wording, but I, I think the intent is primarily just to change it where, um, rather than waiting for the call to come, um, both cities are, are responding some things, but...
And it is limited agreement too. It can be canceled at any time within thirty days. With this, uh, Kevin, these dates would change on the term of the contract, right?
Uh, it would. It's based on the original proposal.
And, and the bottom line is, we'd have a, a year to, if we decided to go into the thing, we'd have a year to see how it worked out.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I'm going to make sure, anybody, the only time we would actually go is, is the same times that mutual aid would be in effect. That's the only time that we would actually go, really cross city lines and go. So we'll put it on the agenda for next week, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Next item to discuss and possibly approve, the contract to purchase salt from Compass Minerals, uh, this in the, this is in the... Motion on the floor to accept this, uh, contract from Compass Minerals. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman, first by Councilman, uh, Best, second by Councilman Wright. Councilman Best, floor is yours. Councilman Wright?
No, I understand, uh, I understand what Dr. Curley's done and it's, it's got to be done.
Floor is open for discussion. Dr. Curley?
Uh, no, this is the only company that, uh, would give us any, uh, salt this year and, uh, they actually didn't want to do it, but we convinced them to give us a contract. And, uh, so the contract is for a hundred tons at eighty-nine seventeen a ton. That's about six dollars more than we've been paying, but it's, it's our only option, actually.
Floor is still open. Yeah, we've run, we've actually had to get some by from the county last year, too.
Yeah.
We'll need to include those numbers he gave us in the motion, Dr. Curley. A hundred ton?
Well, you can, if you want to. That's, that's what the contract's for.
Contract's, is, is specific to all that I'm looking at. Any more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Mike Best?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Last item on the agenda is the, uh, approval on low bid for demolition on 417 Sawani Street and 403 Bird Street. Uh, motion by Councilman Ayler to go ahead and approve low bid, right over. Second by Councilman Best. Councilman Ayler?
Maria, we've worked with them before, haven't we? And not had any problems with the low bid on this, which I believe is, uh...
Right, yes, we actually did this demolition.
Okay.
Councilman Best?
I'm just glad to see this cleaner than the area up some more. Appreciate it.
Floor is open. Call the roll, please.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Mike Best?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
We have one, one appointment left on the, we need a council appointment on the red committee. If you have interest in being the council appointment for that, please send me an email. We'll put that on the agenda for this week, please. Also, uh, don't forget, it's, the Christmas season is coming up. Don't forget to shop harem, shop Rome County. And is there most good there in a second?